Okay, we are now streaming to YouTube and I will hand the meeting off to the chair. Thank you.
What do you mean of the university impact district review? Sounds like I just got unmuted. Okay. This is the June 25th, 2020 meeting of the university impact district review board. The next meeting will be on Thursday, the 23rd of July at 4:00 PM. Location to be determined. Probably virtual like this one. See what I've got here. You'll have to pardon me. This is my first time doing a virtual meeting. First of all, need to swear in staff on Patrick if you'd like to raise your right hand. Is the testimony you got to give the truth, the whole truth and no, nothing but the truth? Patrick?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Let me do, okay, there we go. So your hand. Thank you. All right. Let me do a roll call of board members. Frank Petrazillo.
Present.
KB Jones. You muted KB?
Present.
Doreen Sauer.
She's present.
Pasquale Grado.
Present.
Kerry Reed.
Present.
All right, and I guess I'm vice chair, Yoni Fleming. All right. It covers roll call. What's the next item? Staff report. Do we have, what's? All right. Do we have staff report or is? Yeah.
It's. It's linked.
We got it and it's on the download. Okay. All right. So first item of the board is approval of the record of action from the May 28th meeting. Board members, have you had a chance to review the record of action? Are there any corrections or changes to the record? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Kerry?
Can I get a second?
Second. Frank.
All those in favor say aye. I guess we, well, let's say your name.
Kerry Reed's aye.
KB, aye. Frank, aye.
Pasquale, aye.
Doreen, she ready to recuse herself?
Yes.
Okay. Yoni, aye. All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to cases. The first application is UID 20-02-08. 28 to 30 East 13th Avenue. And we'll start by swearing in the applicants if they'll make sure that their video screen is up and we can see them. Raise your right hand. Is the testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, staffs, you want to tell us what we're looking at?
Yeah, so this is, this staff report is actually going to have two motions, but I'll just read the one staff report and analysis. But we need to have a motion for the variance changes and then the actual built building. So just keep that in mind. But the applicant is proposing to add a two, two and a half story addition to the north side of an existing two and a half story duplex at 2830 East 13th Avenue. The existing structure is a three unit residential building that will add an additional unit to bring the total of the four units. Each unit is generally a mirror image of each other with two units having entrances on the south and two units having entrances on the north. The parking lot will be modified and the garage at the rear of the property will be removed. Variances include converting a three unit dwelling into a four unit dwelling and construction of a building addition. Reducing the sum of the width to the side yards of the existing building from eight feet, which is 20% of the lot width, to the existing sum of the east and west side yards of 2.5 feet. Additionally, to reduce the minimum east and west side yards of the existing building from five feet to two feet and .5 feet from the west side yard. And to reduce the east side yard of the rear addition from five feet to two and a half feet. Staff notes, the new construction is generally consistent with plan recommendations and design guidelines. The guidelines state that landscaping should be part of the projects and to enhance structures. Staff notes concerns about the lack of landscaping and screening along Pearl Street and parking encroaching into the landscaped rear yard. Staff recommends adding landscaping along the Pearl Street frontage. Staff recommends support for the variances and a conditional approval for the structure. The conditions being landscaping be added along the Pearl Street frontage.
All right, if the applicants would like to. Explain, talk about process, tell us about.
Brad, you're up.
He's muted.
Okay. All right. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that. So if we're just talking about the variances at this point, variances are for the existing building because we're having a change of use. Need to bring it into current standards. Staff expected fairly well, so I don't really have much to add. When we start talking about the building, then I have more to discuss, but if we're just discussing the variances right now, then I think.
And this is Yoni, just to be clear, you're here for both purposes, is that right? You're looking for support on the variances and also for a vote on the certificate of approval?
Yes.
All right, well, let's start on the variant side, I guess. Board members, any comments or questions?
Yeah, Bradley, variances are based on hardship. Can you tell us what the hardship is on the two variances that you're asking?
With the existing building, as you can see on the southwest corner of the existing building, it's still within a foot of Pearl Street. So because of the change of use, we need to bring the entire building and the site into current code requirements. And unfortunately, there's nothing we can really do with that existing side yard setup. All the other portions of the code, the FAR block coverage, all that stuff, that all meets current code without any variances. It's just in the existing building to current standards.
So it's non-conforming and it needs to have a variance in order to be conforming. The existing is non-conforming and needs a variance to be conforming. Is that correct?
Yes.
Questions from any other board members?
Is there any? By, by supporting this variance, are we? By, by default, are we supporting something else that is, you know, just material? Because, you know, it seems at a service that there's no discussion here, really. It's just what Bradley said.
These variances are needed to be voted on before you can move on to the existing structure, if that answers your question.
Yeah, I, I think that's the intent. I think Frank's question is simply, does voting on the variance does affect anything beyond this project itself? Maybe I'm, I don't know. Am I interpreting anything that's right?
You know, I guess I was, I was looking at legacy, you know, by, by approving these, does that mean that we've opened the door on the rest of the project to do something or not? I don't think it does. I think all it does is allow them to do what's allowable by the, by the code. So I, I will answer my own question. I don't think it is.
This is Jackie Yeoman with the Columbus Plain Division. I just wanted to chime in really quick and say, even though there's two motions, there's no reason why the commission can't discuss the entire project all at the same time and then go back. So if there, so I just want to, I feel like that might answer your question, Frank, in terms of, you know, being able to discuss it as a whole. And then you can go back and motion separately for the two. So there's no reason why you can't. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. I, I was worried that we were, you know, trapping ourselves here. So could you, could you then Bradley, if that's okay with you, Yoni, could Bradley go ahead and talk about the project?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead, Brad.
So last time we came was back in February and there's a lot of discussion about having the two fronts. And at the time, we had the addition fronting the north side, the alley, essentially mirroring the side that fronts 13th. We went back in, we made some small tweaks. We changed around how the windows work. We changed the dormer configuration. We added a gable over the entry to the back steps. That's the. To help differentiate it a little bit, but still keep the same character and the same. Style as what's on the front. Some of the other comments were how we address the east and west elevations. There were some double windows and there was another that was a blank facade. So we went in and we saw what we could do code wise. It will require some rated windows to be installed on the east side. But. Last iteration, we had a blank facade and I think it was Frank that pointed out that you didn't really like that blank facade. We can add those windows and we're still allowed to do that because we're beyond the three feet from the property line. That was pretty much the gist of what was discussed last time is making some subtle tweaks to make the back slightly different from the front while still keeping some of the same character.
Board members, questions, comments?
Frank, Yoni, correct. I'm mistaken, but wasn't one comment that the dormers not extend all the way to the peak of the roof last time? Maybe I'm thinking of another project. I thought that was someone made.
Some of the comments were with regard to the roof line and how we were addressing that. It wasn't necessarily not having the dormers reach the peak. It was, should we step it? Should we see what we can do? Unfortunately, the section is a little tight.
Okay.
There's not as much leniency. I think if we could do something, then we. We can do, but the addition right now already steps 12 inches below the existing peak. I guess we could shorten the top of that rear dormer to step down further to the back. I wouldn't be opposed to that and it wouldn't really necessarily affect anything on the inside. Yeah, some of the discussion was about how we address the roof lines and how we make it look like an addition, but still. Maintain the existing continuity.
I think it's the two side dormers. Yeah. You know, could, I don't think there's any magic to keeping the slope the exact same on the dormer on the east and west elevation. If the, I, it wouldn't bother me at least if, if it was just a lower pitch on the dormer roof. Such that it took it, it took it away from being coincident with the ridge of the major roof. Otherwise, Bradley, I think you did a very nice job here. I don't misunderstand. I think it's very nice. For, for me, I would lower the, I would lower the pitch on the dormers on the east and west, what I would do. I don't, I don't think there's any problem with the north dormer. That would be my opinion.
Maybe like, because right now we have it at an 1112, maybe like a 912 and that should burn.
Yeah, just, just drop it so it's a foot, a foot or so lower than the ridge.
Can I ask a question about the? Dormer graphics?
Are you breaking up or I can't?
I don't think she's talking.
So, can you hear?
Yeah.
I, I think that the way the dormers work now is successful, both because the space is inside work better and I think they look fun. I think to evaluate the slope, it would be better to almost see it in perspective because that's the way it's going to be observed from the street level. And my read of the way the dormers and the angles work right now is very good. I wouldn't change it. My question is about the dormer windows on the north and the south side. They're different and Bradley, could you explain what the thinking is about those dormer windows blazing?
So the, the attic level of the, of all the, of the front units versus the rear units, layout is slightly different. Existing dormer to the south, we tried to keep that same footprint of what's there. Just because I think it looks really good along that facade, just based on proportions. And then on the north, we had a little bit more flexibility because it's new. So we added a little bit more space to those bedrooms to help differentiate it too from the north entrance.
Are those casement windows?
They appear to be.
Okay, so you have casement windows in the dormer, but the other windows are double hung?
Yes. Well, they're double hung with a foam olean that we need them for egress.
So I'm a little perplexed by the south windows without the foam olean that are in the shower. And I'm wondering about the way that's going to appear from the outside. And I'm wondering why it wouldn't look the same as the olean on the north that's over the bed.
We can, we can put a foam olean in there.
And is casement windows at the shower the ideal?
Depends on who's taking the shower.
So we know if Frank moves in there, he's going to use them, but. We can keep them fixed. I think that's, have them fixed and then add a foam olean to it. I think, yeah, that's fine.
I'm just picturing from the street, seeing those windows bend out. And I wonder if it wouldn't be better to have double hungs throughout.
I agree with that.
This is Patrick. Was the agreement that double hung windows throughout is preferred?
I'm suggesting.
Okay.
They're, 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 you're just adding a crossfire, right though Bradley? They're not, they're not double hung windows or are they double hung windows?
No, they, they would give the, I think on the front facade where the bathrooms are, I think those can be double hung. I don't see a reason, but we can still get that good shadow line. On the back, they have to be casements so we can meet egress requirements.
Oh, I see.
When is our quite big enough? So adding the foam olean gives us the appearance of a double hung without necessarily doing it. On the front, on the south, definitely do it.
Sorry Bradley, the alley side is where you need egress?
Yes.
Yeah, I accept that.
Any other comments or questions from members of the board?
Plan, please? Okay, can you zoom into the back? Look, there you go. Thank you. So I know landscaping, but I'm curious on the stacked space closest to the rear stairs. Is there going to be any pavement that, that gets you up to the stair?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put a sidewalk in there.
Okay, okay, okay. And the same thing at the front to go up to 13th, I assume?
Yes.
This is Yoni. So the, the staff comment was they recommended more landscaping be provided. Bradley, is there a reason you guys aren't showing more landscaping?
No, there's no particular reason. So we use the site plan for both the UID or B and the BZA. Adding landscaping doesn't affect any of the BZA or UAC stuff. So adding boxwoods or different kind of shrubbery along that facade, I think is a vast improvement to what's there. So I think that'd be a really good idea.
Okay. All right. So I think I'll make that a condition of the approval then.
Is there a specific? Species or configuration that you prefer a certain amount of screening or can we put, like I said, some box?
I would say let's ask the board member who's a landscape architect.
This is something that delineates the alley from the, or Pearl Street to, are you really kind of, I assume there's going to be some turf out there. So I think you just want to strengthen that edge, especially given how tight the building is. So, you know, what I would do is from the, basically the center line of the building, I would extend that. I can't see which way is north. I think this would be. Sorry, Kate. Hey, stop, stop. I would extend the shrubs. I guess what I'm saying from there towards 13th, they would all be shrubs. That would make a turn and follow the right of way of Pearl Street up to the dumpster. And then if the rest of it's turf behind that to the building, I think that's fine. But I think you want to consider a constant kind of border along that whole thing, just to park towards the doors close. That'd be my recommendation. And then if you do do any, any ground cover shrubs between the double stack stalls and the porch, I would put parking blocks in unless it's ground cover. Because you're basically going to be running into them when people pull their cars in. And you're going to have a 18 to two foot overhang, depending on what kind of car is, and it's going to tear stuff up. So.
That was what I had, I sent this plan to zoning, 16 at zoning. That was one of her comments to add parking blocks along that. So it's not currently shown, but we will have that to get through zoning.
Okay.
Any other questions and comments from members of the board?
No.
All right. If not, can I get a motion? Well, let's, let's, we need two motions. So let's start with the zoning variance first.
Right.
Can I get a motion on the, the zoning variance?
This is Frank. I moved to report the zoning variance.
Kerry, a second.
All those in favor, say aye and then your name.
Aye KB.
Aye Kerry.
Aye Frank.
Aye Pasquale.
Aye Yoni. All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. You have support for the variance. All right.
Sorry, Yoni. Doreen officially abstained from that.
She's recused from this case, is my understanding.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion for the certificate of approval and make sure you mention your name in the motion?
And then any, also any conditions of approval? Do we want? That landscaping as a condition in the parking blocks or, and or the sidewalk to the stairs? Window crossbars?
All right. Who wants to make that motion?
I apologize. I have a 12 year old lab who barks at leaves blowing down the street. So it kind of is what it is. So I'll, I'll try and make a motion to approve with the following conditions, that a sidewalk be added from the front to 13th Street. Similarly, at the back, that connects the porch to the parking area, that landscaping be added along Pearl Street. That the, I believe it's the 13th Street side, that changes from a casement window to a double hung window. And are we going to go with a dormer, Yoni? Lowering to 12 inches below, are we leaving that alone?
Frank, you're the one who wanted that. KB just agreed.
Look, look, I, I asked Bradley, what do you prefer Bradley?
I like it the way it is, but I might be a little biased.
Well, if you like it the way it is, you, you deserve that. So let's do it.
Okay. That's a necessary.
Was there something, Yoni, about a bar in the window?
Yeah, crossbar in the casement windows at the rear of the, of the house at the addition.
Okay. And the parking.
And landscaping.
Yeah, landscaping, the parking blocks be added. And I think that's all the conditions, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, well, I think I missed one in there. The, what was the dormer condition?
There isn't one.
We, it's going away.
Okay, no, okay. So just to clarify, clarify before we vote, pro security landscaping be added, sidewalk added to the front on 13th and to the rear. Parking, for the parking to the steps. The window casement move from, from a casement window to a double hung window. A crossbar in the casement window in the rear addition and parking blocks.
I believe that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
This is KB, I said.
All right. Yep. Okay, board members, all those in favor, say your name and aye.
Kerry, aye.
KB, aye.
Frank, aye.
Pasquale, aye.
Yoni, aye. All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
Who was the first and second on that?
Kerry was the first, KB was the second.
Thank you.
All right. UID 20-02-009, 1249 North High Street. Turner's Barber Shop.
This is Mark.
The applicant present?
I was trying to ask. Yeah, I don't, I saw a caller in there, but we're looking for Melody Ward or somebody representing Turner's Barber Shop. Looks like there's a couple of call in users that don't have their name identified. Is Melody Ward there or anyone representing Turner's Barber Shop?
I'm not seeing anything, Patrick.
Okay. Do we want to move on then or?
Yes. Now, let's move on. If they show up later, we can return back to them. Okay. Okay, application 1908 Asher's 08, 22 East 17th Avenue, Pregnancy Decision Center.
Yes. The applicant is proposing a complete refresh of an existing pole mounted sign cabinet, including paint and replacement of acrylic sign faces. The faces are flat white, polycarbonate, and the graphics are digitally printed vinyl. The cabinet will be painted gray with color consistent throughout. The university district plan recommends that new signage be simple and limited to business name, logo and function. The proposal is consistent with plan recommendation and staff notes the applicant has taken consideration of the board's previous comments about logo size and color. Staff recommend approve.
Is the applicant present?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me? Yes.
Yeah, can you raise your right hand? Yeah, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you want to go ahead and talk about it?
Yeah, so this is one we talked. There was a reference to the cabinet.
Oh, boy.
It used to be stages of blue, and so we've changed it now to consistent with this dark gray so that it is more absorbed into the background and not overly, it just doesn't stand out. Additionally, we changed all our per recommendation and gave more space between the text and did the same thing also on the window graphics and changed the, where it all tapped to upper and lower, as was requested there. I will throw out one thing, I did actually get an email from this client this morning asking that if we would possibly be able to change the background color of the faces of the pole. Thinking it might be too much teal. I tried to reach them several times today and was not able to. So I didn't know if that would be something you would consider approving with conditions or if only the way that it is presented currently is the way that we would have to go.
Is the background opaque?
I'll start, I think this is, this is improved from last time. I think ditching the uppercase on the, on the window graphic is way better. I don't really object to the teal background, it doesn't really bother me. What you've done with the base of the sign is a lot better than last time, that's for sure, it kind of goes away.
Would there be any opposite? A little harder put up. The sign face to be gray, would there be opposition to that?
I don't believe so. Is the background opaque?
It's not stated as opaque. If you'd prefer it that way.
Yeah, we generally ask for the backgrounds to be opaque because we don't like to see this big bright thing lit up, just, so just the logo and the letters would light and everything else would be non-illuminated.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, for me, I don't care if it's light gray or the teal that it is there, doesn't make any difference to me. I don't buy anybody else.
Would that be something that you'd want city staff to take a last look at the color, I assume?
Yeah, just to verify, why not?
Okay.
Any other comments, board members?
No comment.
Doreen, no comment. KB, no comment.
Can I get a motion then?
Okay, I move, we approve, the application is submitted with the following condition, that the background color be opaque such that it is to prevent illumination transmission and that the, that an optional background color of a light to medium gray would be acceptable upon staff review to determine that there is adequate contrast between the background and the lettering.
I'll second.
And your name is?
My name is Frank today, yes, thank you.
And it's Doreen, and I second.
Do we have a second?
Doreen, I second.
All those in favor, say aye and your name.
Aye, KB.
Aye, Pasquale.
Aye, Carrie.
Aye, Frank.
Aye, Doreen.
Aye, Keone. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
And Patrick, so we had Brian Packer on the line and he was representing SignCom. He was muted and so we didn't catch that in time, so they are ready to go for the next case for Turner's.
Turner's Barber Shop.
Okay, okay.
Okay. All right, so we'll go, we'll look back, UID 20-209, 1249 North High Street, Turner's Barber Shop.
Okay, yeah, Turner's Barber Shop. The applicant is proposing an awning for an existing barber shop above the transom and measuring 11 feet by three and a half feet. The awning will extend three feet six inches from the storefront and the lettering measures 10 inches tall for the business name and 2.3 inches tall for the address. The business name lettering exceeds planned guidelines stating lettering be a maximum of eight inches high. The sign otherwise meets the guidelines for awning and canopy signs. And the applicant has also taken into consideration previous board comments by flattening the text. Staff notes the board has approved larger lettering on awnings when there was no wall sign present. Staff recommends approve with conditions, and the conditions being signed lettering between six and eight inches.